This conference will now be recorded.
The time being 4:46 PM, I'd like to call the meeting of December 22nd, 2022 to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business before we get to the truly important stuff is the taking a look at and selecting a bid for the Town Hall boiler replacement. Selectmen Scanlon?
Yes, so it's been a busy week and amazing every night, and I also met with contractors here from Energy Unlimited and Can Man HVAC LLC. I've got some information which she compiled for me very nicely. Take one, pass it down.
I'm having trouble hearing you around these two here, John. Could you talk?
Sure, yeah. The cotton cookies. Keep my way through them. So we've got that, we've got. And this would be the next one. I printed these up, so we have enough.
This is just.
Looks like a couple of.
This is just an overview of some of the.
That's, this is the second one, so we separate this and that in a separate file.
One-pagers.
That last one is going to be pile. Okay, I see. Okay, I see.
Put staples on the business. One short on that. Thank you. That goes with this. This one goes with.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what this.
No, this one goes, this one. Can man.
Yeah.
And this one.
Should be.
Bottom one goes there.
She sent those to, um, Cameron was, had an additional bid for the differences if he had two boilers.
Uh, everything that I got from him is what's there.
Oh, sending off today.
I didn't see.
On medicine to get off.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, so.
If you can forward that to me, I can go print it off.
I don't have it. He sent it to, he was, you know, having it. So everybody has had this same thing that they're bidding on. Um, he also put one in for the two boiler, but I believe it went to Gail, who's out today, so it might have gotten hung up.
Got one here with two boiler.
That's the Energy Unlimited. He was saying that the Can Man also called it. With two.
Yeah, because I only met him last night. So he, I guess he was going to send it in. He said it'll be around one, a thousand to $1,200 additional if we want to switch it out. So I think they're pretty much, when you go to pricing, it's pretty equal.
Have you done any, any research into any of these various models, John?
Well, um, I can, I can tell you that they're both.
Yeah, you can tell me that, based on, based on.
Yeah, um, you know Bosch, they've, they make a great system. They, they make, um, you know, they make good quality stuff. Will McLean does too. Um, I think Bosch been around. Are you here from Energy Unlimited?
No.
Yeah.
These are, these are new residents looking to eat cookies.
You know anything about boilers? Hey, we'll broke you in later. Uh, so, uh, basically they're the same. Will McLean's been around since 1800s. And doing that Bosch, um, they've been around like 40 years. Pretty much they have the same capabilities here. The differences after talking with them, you could go with the one boiler or you could go with two boilers. The two boilers would have two at, it was 150,000 BTUs, right around that. One's 151. But the concept is, is that with the two, one would run when it's less demand and then the other one would kick on too. After checking into it, it's the system, if one fails, it doesn't mean that the other one will keep going. Because you would have to have two at 300,000 BTUs to make it redundant system that would, um, cover for, um, if one failed.
Because they're hooked in together.
They're hooked in together. So if you have two, we need 300,000 BTU. That's what I was explaining, that's what we have.
So that's the energy efficiency thing versus redundancy, higher availability features?
Yeah. So now with the one boiler, um, the difference is, is that it adjusts the input and the flow. So one boiler will go, it says, okay, it's only needing X amount of heat, so I'm only going to put the burner on at 90,000 or 80,000 BTUs, or now it's getting a little, it needs more heat. I guess it senses the return temperatures and outside.
Is that the one that has the six-zone controller, John?
There, that's one that has six. Um, I believe he said seven, that he have seven, changed it to seven.
Well, I saw one with, one of them says six and it might, but only one of them, so there you go.
So, um, the next part of it, if there's any other questions that I might be able to answer, as you.
I do have a very important question, I think. What about the venting of this thing?
Okay.
Does that lead to chimney replacements or anything like that?
Okay, so the way it vents, because they're so efficient, they now vent through PVC pipe. It's that quote. Uh, they're so efficient that you don't have all the heat going up the chimney. So, uh, what it would be is if we had the, um, two system, we'd have to have four pipes going out. Or with the two system on the Will McLean, we could have two hub pipes which would contain um, one input and one output. It's like one, uh, if you've ever seen.
One in, one out.
Yeah, and it's all built into a hub.
But these are just horizontal exhausts, you know, you provide a certain amount of.
Yeah, yeah, they can go right out. Um, and then the condensate, because it's so efficient and also has good amount of condensation that collects in it, which goes back and collects into a pump which neutralizes it and sends it out to our drain. Both contractors include all that. I talked to Energy Unlimited. Originally, he had intended to put the pipes out on the sidewalk, but the problem with that is the dripping. And he said that the, um, we'd have to supply some type of catch area for it. And you'd have like a four-foot pipe for the out and a two for the in, or it might be the other way around, I forget, on this sidewalk side. Um, I did point out to him about the other side and show him in the alley and he said, oh, okay, we can, we could put it out in the alley. We wouldn't have to worry about discharge of water on the sidewalk, um, which is a code issue.
Uh, discharging, uh, water into that alley might be an issue for the guys that own the house.
So it would.
How much water are we talking about?
Some, some dripping. Um, however, out there where the drain pipe comes down, there's a gravel catch basin and a drain that connects up to our storm drain. So that solves all that. So either way, they're going to have to go up through the floor um, and then out through at the bottom of the staircase and go out. Presently, we have our roof drain pipe that's in that hall there. So it'll be next to them, so that all that could be boxed off neatly or left exposed as the roof drain is now. So that takes care of that. Um, so if you go with the two, you're gonna have four pipes coming out.
I have a couple of questions. One is, uh, I noticed on the brochure for the Bosch that it clearly states that it's commercial. Um, do you have an opinion one way or another, commercial versus, um, residential, I'm sorry, Bosch is residential, I, I apologize, residential, so, uh, longevity? You know, 20, 25, 30 years from now, is that gonna make a difference buying a residential unit in a, in a commercial setting? Number one, and. Go ahead, I'll ask another question.
And yeah, I, I noticed that, that the Will McLean is a commercial. And the other one says it's residential for homes, condos and that. That's something like you folks would have to all think about making your decision, perhaps.
Has, has there been any research into like serviceability and like part availability and manufacturing in terms of how many technicians for the one brand versus the other, it's made, you know, 100 miles away or another.
So pretty much anybody services either of these brands. They're both very common and they're both top-of-the-line stuff that stock regularly. I asked about parts and all of them said that parts are available regularly or, um, overnight could get shipped in. They're, they're the common brands, so it's not a off-brand. Both of them are, you know, that's one of the things I checked into. Or make sure that we can, uh, supply.
And then the, the one that has the two, uh, boilers, is that something where like in the future we upgrade to 200 BTUs versus 2100 BTUs if, you know, if it was a decision at a future point?
Not necessarily. It would be same price over again.
Okay, alright.
So the other thing, um, so I don't know if that answers your question.
Probably would need to keep this to the table because we've really bogged down the time on this discussion. I apologize. The other, I have one more question, and that is, um, in the lower bid on the one unit on the McLean, um, the bid includes, um, six zones. This includes, um, taking care of the heat, problems that we have, the disparity that we have downstairs in the, in the hallways, in the room, the corner rooms that we have right now. And then the, did you have a chance to talk with the other bidder on the zone and the different heat issues on that?
Yes, he updated his, uh, information. So it would be, if he can easily fix it right there, um, he would. But, um, if not, he'll evaluate what it is and they can come back and, um, fix that. And it was at a rate of $120 an hour. It was $120 an hour to resolve the other issues.
So in this bid, it's included and this bid it's not included?
No.
Okay, got it.
Not necessarily. It's not written in there, but he would see what he could do.
Okay, got it.
He, the other thing is, is energy, or the one, let's see, they gave us the New Hampshire saves where we could get, um, $1,500 rebate on, on each burner. However, when I read through it, if you look at the top number one on it, I hope you've read that. That expires next week. It'll have to be installed by the end of the week, so that's, that's not gonna. Now, perhaps they're going to renew that, but either one, we are eligible for. Whatever we go with, we, we apply for that.
Because the Will McLean is 96.5 efficiency.
Yeah.
And it's still an unknown on the rebate though?
It's unknown. It's, yeah.
Maybe a purchase order would be sufficient, perhaps?
Oh, with the rebate? Oh, no, it has to be installed.
It has to be installed.
In the building, yeah. Um, so that's that. Um, you know, I don't know how, any, any other question that I might be able to answer, I think, um.
Amazing.
I'd like to know if you have a, a recommendation, John, based on your conversations and the research that you've done. One, because we're talking about 1,200 bucks here, and it sounds like more or less they're gonna be both very good pieces of equipment. Uh, is one of them worth an extra 1,200 bucks?
Well, I think the things that I was considering is having the four holes in the side of the building, four orange holes. So if we can get away from that and just go with the, you know, two holes. I, I like one burner. As opposed to two, I, I don't think we're gonna gain a lot by having the two.
Twice as much to break.
But, I mean, everybody, these, both contractors were very, you know, I have faith in them. I, I just, I know Will McLean's been around a long time. I like those. I haven't had any experience with Bosch, but they're a well-known and a good name.
I'd like to make a motion to go with the bid for Can Man HVAC for $27,000 for, uh, replacement of the boiler in Town Hall.
Second.
Motion in the second discussion.
I think we've already discussed.
Ad nauseam. So hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. So, um, so the select, selectmen decided they'd like to start a new tradition, um, in an annual open house just before Christmas. A time when residents can stop by for some refreshments and meet casually with the selectmen. Um, we do have a little bit of an agenda. Um, the first is the selectmen's Christmas cookie contest. Each selectman or their wife has prepared a batch of cookies that will be tasted and judged by our esteemed panel of judges. Those judges being Fred Caruso from 90, from Mix 941, Tilton Police Chief Abe Gilman, and Catherine Middleton, reporter from Eltonia Daily Sun. Right now, I'm gonna turn it over to our evening's emcee, our town administrator, Jeannie Forrester, to lay out the logistics of the contest.
Thank you, judges, and thank you to our selectmen for agreeing to enter into this contest that I can see is already getting a little. Each judge will find, um, um, actually, if you want to come up to the table, you don't like. So we, um, we bought you straight.
It's not, it's not.
Oh, alright.
One has a leak.
Am I gonna tell you?
He knows. He knows.
And about one judge should have taken raw milk, I think it was.
He says it's milk.
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna test one cookie at a time, so I'll leave it up to you to grab an apple and a plate. And I would start at that, yes?
Uh, just in the interest of, you know, disclosure, if any of you are allergic to nuts, some of these cookies have.
Okay.
Are the cookies in front of the people who made them?
No, not necessarily.
Good.
Okay, alright.
Random cookie.
Random cookie.
And, uh, you're gonna taste, you're gonna judge appearance and taste. So.
I think you should go with how it goes with milk.
But I don't, I don't think you want me to do that because I don't like milk.
Just checking the data, it's insurance, yeah.
I may make moves. I may or may not work next bullet district.
I know you do. Oh, you entire cookie.
You don't, you don't. You just take one bite, that's it. If you're like a professional food judge, you take one bite and that's it. I learned that from barbecue competition.
Well, they haven't keeled over yet.
Yeah, it takes a little while to get it digested. So we're 911 to be done. I had it solved the other day. That's good. Oh, Swedish little mint.
I saved myself.
Okay, so are you all, all through with the first one? Nobody's died?
Yeah, that's reassuring.
Yep.
Now are these, well, I can't ask the question because it would then indicate who made the cookie, so.
Thank you. First negative, white powder in the blue uniform. I wore black. I know. Oh, yeah. Get it by your nose. Hold on a sec. Oh.
That's a true Italian, isn't it? Love it. Yes, it is.
You need some sauce to go with that.
Good? Let's figure out.
Uh-oh. Any? Casually, five-second rule. You have to fight their down.
Alright, Catherine, I may ask you to reach there in the middle, grab those.
Do that?
You. Thank you.
When do we get to try them?
I have a similar. Where's water? Naptime.
Yes, look at the plate.
Someone tried to gain points. See if it worked.
I was gonna say.
Oh, no. Okay. Do not.
That one was colder. I was like, I better, you know.
It's dog cookies.
I've been fooled before. I said, don't eat ones that look like dog cookies, and I said, I've been fooled before.
You know what? Clean your teeth.
Did you drop your cookies?
No, there's some dog cookies on there. Yeah, it's crisp.
Dog biscuit cookies.
They make your teeth whiter.
Gourmet dog biscuit cookie maker here in.
No, they left.
They left.
Good?
All good.
You got one more.
What kind is the one way down at the end?
Yeah, yeah. I'm looking forward to trying these.
Michaela, we're gonna come in.
I've never met a cookie I didn't like. I know, that was, that's my problem.
If they don't have your wisdom and it's just.
I'm just ready to rush the table.
I could smell the cookies.
Well, there's one more contest after the second time.
A cookie eating contest.
Who can eat the most cookies? I would lose it that one, I'm sorry.
I might have a chance.
I would definitely.
Very good, and I did it, we lose.
So remember, it's appearance and taste.
No, I worked.
I would bet my money.
Presentation.
Appearance is presentation.
I heard a noise around the way.
Alright, so, um, the three of you, now that you're done, you can confer with each other and see if you wanna, if you wanna go in the back of the room and talk or.
Take a couple of cookies with you or?
Yeah, I'll take the, I'll grab a plate because I'm gonna have my, I won't be able to explain.
Alright, firmish.
Yeah.
Alright.
I think anyone else who would like to come and sample, anyone who would like to come sample, please come sample. Not you, Joe.
Why?
A public person.
No.
Just don't eat the ones that look like dog bones. Those are actually for dogs.
Oh my god. Yeah, John. Those are the dogs.
But they make your teeth whiter.
Listen, I told you.
Clean your teeth while you.
No, they're just decorations. You said presentation.
Yes, big chocolate.
They are Walter cookies though.
Those ones here?
No.
I recommend these. It's the only one I've eaten so far.
You know, so they go to the sewer department to do the competition. So. I've never made those. I was.
He did, Walter is very cute. 1,000 yesterday.
This one, try.
What is that one?
It's a chocolate chip. Yeah, various chocolate chips.
Yeah.
There's milk ones and then there's the, uh, lighter one. There are no bad cookies. I made the, I made the, uh.
Ask Eric which one he made.
The, the Jack Skellington looking one's down on the end of very good.
Those are store-bought.
Yeah, none of them are store-bought.
None of them are store-bought.
Jack Skellington. Death by chocolate, scotch, the chocolate cake and white chocolate crust. The cheesecake one.
You got these.
Not trying to influence you, you know.
The judges are back.
They were all good. There's pressure here.
Okay, since the judges don't know who made what cookies, they're gonna just announce what cookie won and then award the winner.
The winner. They can show themselves, yes. So.
They were all.
They were all great. Yep, they were all great. Um, it was not easy, uh, but we all decided that the winner of the first annual. Yeah, he said. Yeah, he said, go out with a bang, I have the badge, yeah.
And the mace.
It's all good.
Did he threaten to? Because he loves coming in front of us so. Taser or firearm or something?
Yeah, so the winner is.
Where's the bag that they came?
Now who?
Yeah.
Those are John's.
Those are, those are good. I've never had, I don't know, almost like angel food, like takes a little of everything on them.
It's almost like a muffin.
Yeah. All good.
The next thing we need to do is have a picture with the judges holding a platter of cookies and whatever.
What if they drop it?
Wait, were those tested for cocaine?
We can't do the test kit anymore, we have to send them out to the state labs, it's gonna take a while. We'll let you know, we'll get the last picture and then we'll. Presentation, though, those were great, I don't know who did the, those are yours, we love the presentation on the snowman.
Fentanyl, something like that.
Try one of those chocolate chips. Oh yeah, I wanna try them all. Yeah, all look good.
Oh my god.
All look very outstanding.
Sam, were you taking those all home?
No, of course not. Of course not.
I didn't know. When I came in, I saw it all.
Sherry's cooking at that house.
Like twenty people all glad about there. Those are my favorites.
I know you were talking about that, I didn't know you were talking that last time. Didn't even know which ones, I was blinded, I can see why.
Thank you, judges.
Thank you.
That's a gold plate?
Thank you. Yeah, that's a gold plate, right? I'm gonna finish them over here.
You gotta take some of these.
Oh, I am, I'm taking my plate, yeah, hey, if I can.
So we were very lucky to have Fred Caruso agree to be the judge of the town hall branch decorating contest. So, Mr. Caruso, can you please tell us which group won and why? The selectmen's lobby, office lobby, group two was town clerk tax collector's area, and group three was the second floor land use sewer commission.
Well, I've come here every day for the last three weeks to look at the displays.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, probably didn't know. Just kidding. Everything was really festive here. And I did take pictures when I got here and was studying them over here while you were talking about the boiler, because the boiler head really didn't interest me.
Why not?
And the selectmen's corner, that's it, I think, is gonna get the ribbon. Good job.
Good job, I think it goes to her right down to the end there.
Yeah, yeah. She's the keeper of the trophy.
Because there's so much candy.
You did a great job.
Lots of candy. Would we like to, would you like to fast forward right on to the Spot the Grinch?
Yes.
As many know, the town hosted a Spot the Grinch in Tilton contest. From December twelfth to noon on December twenty-second, if you spotted the Grinch, all you had to do was go on the website and complete the form telling us where and when you saw the Grinch. The Grinch gained its tour of Main Street starting with the town clerk tax collector's office, where he tried unsuccessfully to register his sleigh. Turns out, he's an out of state guy. Then the Grinch visited Thomas Richard to get his green hairdo, ate some pizza at the Tilton House of Pizza, walked up and down Main Street, stopped into Bryant Lawrence Hardware for some snacks, worms and frawlers, visited Diana's Fresh Row and many other businesses on Main Street. The sightings started coming in, and now we are ready to draw from the entries to win gift cards compliments of Selectman Constantino and Town Clerk Tax Collector, Kim Souls.
So, I've put the entries, all that came in, in the basket. And each selectman has the opportunity to draw one and Selectman Constantino, because she was the winner of the cookie contest, gets to draw the last one, because there are six prizes. So what you're gonna do is tell me what the number is. That you draw.
Oh, I think it's.
And then I'll read who.
Could be one.
I drew. Probably worth it. So the first number that was drawn, me, is number six.
Oh, lucky number.
I'm gonna let you read it.
Okay, so this person saw the Grinch at the Tilton House of Pizza at eleven thirty-eight AM, and that was Ashley LeBlanc.
Ashley here? She's not here.
Alright, Ashley.
Alright.
They can pick their, their prizes up at the selectmen's office?
Yeah, yeah, I was holding for you. Sorry.
Yeah, you can't cheat.
Number two. What's up, Blake, making my cookies?
No, you worked. You were up early going to work.
Hi, I spotted the Grinch crossing Main Street in Tilton and went into Tilton House of Pizza on Thursday, December fifteenth, a few minutes before noontime. Right to say who it is? Oh, sorry.
It's a mystery.
Richard Hutchinson. Richard Hutchinson.
Perfect, Richard is here, but we'll call him and let him know.
You bet.
I think there's something to your drink there.
Number, I drew number three. We saw the Grinch walking in downtown Tilton with a police officer near the old Paulies on twelve fifteen around noontime. And the winner is Kylie May.
Alright. Wonder who that police officer was?
Apparently, the Grinch was a lot of free.
And I drew number one. He spotted the Grinch on December fifteenth on Main Street in Tilton around twelve thirty. And the name is Becky Hughes. The unit win number one, Becky, no, you can pick that up at the town hall.
Number five.
Air mail.
I saw the Grinch walk into, into Tilton House of Pizza at eleven thirty-five AM on twelve fifteen Thursday morning. Tiffany Taylor. For that Grinch loves pizza.
I'm so surprised people were at T-HO, no one ever goes there.
Last is number four. I saw the Grinch at Tilton House of Pizza. Laura Lango.
Alright.
Nice and great advertising for Tilton House of Pizza.
Yeah, perfect, well, congratulations to all the winners.
What did they win?
They got gift cards to warm. Nice.
Lunch with the Grinch.
That might be almost as valuable as lunch with Fred. Lunch with the Grinch.
So we do have a nod too, does anyone want?
Of course.
We're all too formal behind the desk.
Yes, at this point, I think at this point, it's just.
Should we have Mr. Jessman do his normal?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to, at this time, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.